It is six thirty and the planning board, Bill, we start on time. So, we all have an agenda. And the first thing on the agenda is the hall order and then introductions. Jeff?
I'm Jeff Bacon, acting town clerk.
I'm Kathy Rooney, seventeen-year member of the zoning board, and I am a legal resident of the town of Summerfield.
I'm Paul from the planning board.
Dick from the planning board.
From that, the planning board.
Dwight from the planning board.
Jim Hoffman, town attorney.
Matt, so acting planning director.
So, the next item on the agenda, number three, is the election of chair and vice-chair.
Before we do that, I want to suggest we change our agenda. I've moved that to after number five, which is new business, or, yeah, after new business.
One second.
My second.
All maker. Call. Passes five with zero.
If the board wants to do that, that's their priority. Generally, because the chair's term has been officially already ended, generally that election should take place at the beginning of the board.
We know, but we're trying to help out. We're having, it's been waiting for us.
I'm waiting for us for a while. Okay. Consent agenda and the minutes from last meeting. Have you ever had a chance to read the minutes from here? I have to thank Jeff for making an attempt to draft the minutes, not being here, not knowing what went on. I took those minutes and corrected them, best of my knowledge. So, I think you have a copy of the revised minutes as page two through six. There is one question I want to make, Jeff. Duane is a permanent member for, Duane is a permanent member for, okay. And Kyle Sett for him, Kyle Sett for, for Clint, the last meeting of the twentieth of January.
Let's see. Duane is the permanent member for, and who's set for?
Kyle Saltz.
Kyle Saltz.
Stock, Seth, and Phil Bata. Okay. Got it. So, with that, does anyone else have any corrections of minutes?
Was the county manager in attendance at that meeting?
He was.
He was.
And you were too.
I was.
I checked the tape. With that, I take the motion to approve the minutes as amended. I say motion. Second. All maker. Okay, so passes four, zero. We have one person coming up stage because he wasn't here, which is fine. Okay. That takes care of items one, two, and four. And the next item is new business, agenda by the chairman. And Matt, you're prepared to present that to us?
Yeah, I'll just go through, everyone has a packet and step forward. I don't summarize it all, I'll go through everything. But basically, case number RC-06-2034. The applicant is requesting rezoning from the agricultural AG district to conditional zoning rural residential district, so CZ dash. Location, parcel is, give or take, twenty-four point five-six acres and located at six-four-one-eight Lake Brand Drive. Appicent parcel number one-three-six, four-nine-eight. To the north is unincorporated Guilford County. To the south is RS, single-family residential. To the east AG, which is also the single-family residential. And to the left is RS thirty, SWAG, single-family residential. The applicant made the proposed zoning change only approved form based on the act of amendment The four-hour informational meeting was held on August nineteenth, twenty-four, for the applicant and his citizens to meet and formally discuss potential original redevelopment. Several residents did attend the meeting and asked questions from the applicant. Characteristics of those both districts, rural residential district, as well as one, two, three, four. It's for accommodating rural, non-farm residences on large tracts of land. Its purpose is to preserve rural character, significant natural and man-made features and environmental assets of theirs. This district will be used for residential use, residential uses in large strip re-tertiary or as desired away from the center of the county. Lots will typically be served by private well and those types of things. Overall gross density shall typically be point three-three units per acre or less, with a minimum lot size of sixty-five square foot. There is no open space requirement for the RR and some districts. Building types allowed in RR and some districts, or farm area, detached houses, manufactured homes, rural workplaces, etc. The planning department, go ahead, get to that. Like I said, I'm not going to read everyone, y'all want to read everything, but we'll get to the new test right now. The planning department recommendation. Given the limited scope of potential current uses, the planning department recommends that the board approve.
Recommend.
It should say, if you're correct. The planning board will recommend approval to town council. The planning department finds that the application is in congruence with the comprehensive plan, given its appropriate housing and residential development and civil conditions to mitigate the over nine-mast and parkland. And in the application, when we talk about this is conditional rezoning, and the condition is that the maximum number of building lots shall not exceed nine.
That's the only condition?
That is the only condition. That I'm worried about. The applicant can clarify, but that's the only application, that's correct.
Any questions?
Yeah. So, my math says twenty-four point five-six acres at point three-three density comes up to eight-point-one, not nine. And picture, the map that you have, there's seven, unless I count, I mean, I counted multiple times, but I see seven lots on the map that we were presented. The math says you have eight, and you're asking for a building of lots totally nine. So, I'm not clear about that.
I would love the applicant to clarify on that. And just for, I will say this, that because it's conditional zoning, they are required to have a sketch plan. This is only a sketch plan, but the conditions say nine lots maximum.
What is Article three, or UDO, say as far as lot size? Is it, does it have to, I know the minimum lot size is six thousand, six thousand square feet.
Right.
But does it, when you total it out, does it have to indicate that there's three acres available for every lot? For nine, for nine lots, that would require twenty-seven acres. Is that in our UDO? My understanding was typically...
My understanding is that when you go into RR, it's sixty thousand square foot minimum. And the conditions state that the maximum nine lots, and again, this is only a sketch plan.
Okay. I can see this sketch plan might not go with what your request was, because sketch plan has got seven lots on it. And like I said, the math says eight, and your request is for nine. I'd like to look.
There's no guarantee that, this is not a development plan, right? So, you know, if it does get approved, the town council to RR with the condition that maximum nine lots. There's no guarantee that depending on the soils and things like that, and roadways, it, you know, there's no guarantee that they can get nine lots. It could be...
Well, I understand that, but I don't understand why if the math says they can have eight lots, they're asking for nine. Twenty-four point five-six times point three-three is eight-point-one.
I'm going to let the applicant.
Okay, yeah, let's let the applicant.
He's the design engineer, so.
Any more questions before we have to go right up? Come on, Paul. Bill?
Bill Grieco, Land Solutions, field office, three-four-seven, Oak Ridge.
Kevin?
Yeah. Did you grab the slip when you leave, when you walk out? Yeah.
Okay.
I got it.
I got it.
Here this evening speaking, obviously in favor of the application. I'd like to thank staff and their assistants for putting it together. I'd also like to thank the board for juggling schedules around to accommodate our, our applicants should have food, and certainly appreciate that. As staff mentioned, we did hold the open house, and that was, in my estimation, really well attended, so we'd like to also thank our adjacent property owners who attended and participated in the open house. I don't have a lot of story to tell here. This is a twenty-four acre parcel. We selected this district intentionally. There is increasingly a demand for, and the term large is relative, but for larger parcels. As many of you are aware, in our, I call them new subdivisions, where we're building streets and RBDs and PDRs and all that sort of thing, the industry's data is a four-bedroom set big system, and those lots typically don't have enough square footage or enough size to accommodate what loosely called toys, boats, campers, RVs, these type of things. And they certainly don't accommodate larger families when you have more than four bedrooms in the home, whether that be five children or parents aging in place, or whatever that is. So, we certainly see the demand. Some feel has other options in book, obviously. I can't tell you from a design perspective, I'm essentially given a piece of clay to mold into something. I could bolt this in a twenty-four lot, blink my eye on PDR. It's beautiful topography, it's beautiful soils, there's really nothing remarkable in terms of a design challenge. There is one stream adjacent to one property line, and we certainly have to buffer that accordingly, but there could be many more houses here. I think it's a beautiful piece to do exactly what we're trying to do with what is really, really lovestriving. Our sketch, again, I don't want to make it worse to reemphasize, the sketch is a sketch. We're required to have something so that we can all have a discussion point. You'll notice our lot sizes, if you will, somewhat average from, give or take, two acres to almost six acres. Our application, I will mention that in terms of conditions, we have a use condition that is not mentioned. We have voluntarily restricted our uses to single-family residential uses and other. Our other condition is the maximum number of building lots shall not exceed nine. So, the reason you see nine, is I looked at this before I ever really pulled out the sketch pad and said I can do nine pretty easy. Then I did the sketch, and I liked seven better, so that's the discrepancy there. We're going to stay with nine as a maximum. I intentionally left my phone in the truck because I've talked on it way too many times today, so I don't have a calculator.
Math, you got the eight-point-one?
Mathematically, if we take, so the point three-three, I think that's dwelling units per acre.
Right, point three-one per acre, correct.
Okay, so our number of dwelling units is nine, divide that by twenty-four point whatever and tell me what that is.
What I just did was I took your number of acres and multiplied by point three-three, and that's eight-point-one.
That's not how you do that.
So, we're always done.
Density is, density is the number of dwelling units per acre.
No, I'm talking about, I understand how you math.
Point three, is point three-seven.
Point three-seven, so nine apparently is wrong.
Yeah.
So, if the board would be a minimal to it, I would be more than happy to change that number to eight this evening, and that's what will be presented to town council.
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Otherwise, you have to ask for a character.
Correct.
And that comes off, that comes off the right math, then we're math the same.
Yeah, all math the same, no matter how we get there. That's, like I said, I'll look that up.
Perfect.
Again, I don't think there's a lot of...
Yeah, that's your point too, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's it. Eight, eight is a good number.
Again, I don't have a lot to say about this one. Obviously, I think it's a good application. It certainly does coincide with our land use plan with our UDO descriptions. Staff has made a favorable recommendation. We certainly appreciate a favorable recommendation from the board. I'm here to answer any and all questions that you may have.
I can't find it right now, Bill, but I thought I saw where you checked it. It could include manufactured housing?
No.
Oh, you did have some kind of better. No, it's actually, the UDO in the description of rural residential, I mean, mentions manufactured housing.
That's not true.
That's what we saw.
That's not true, but the use condition limited to single-family residential.
We're not called that manufactured housing.
No, sir. That is specific.
I'll buy that for you, but he is, he is excluded from single-family. Okay. We need to look. Are you going to, manufactured housing, so two town clerk, you're not, you're not like her, so that's all.
Kevin, are you, by restricting it to single-family residential uses, restricting all of the people who buy these lots in the future to never having an auxiliary dwelling unit? Auxiliary dwelling units by right in your state right now, I'm pretty sure that if you live a lot and it's big enough to fit no auxiliary dwelling unit, you can put it on your lot. And the question is, if you put this, uses shall be limited to single-family residential uses, are you removing that right from your particular purposes?
Answer to that question is that would depend on the staff, the planning board, and the town council at the time, should that question be raised. We could expand upon that sentence if we wanted to be technically correct and say, limited to single-family uses and customary accessory structures, as defined by some of the UDO. That have to cover a poolhouse, a shed, an ABU, so I don't know if it works in that level of regularity on applications. You folks, seventeen years, you would not want to know that?
I would add that, or just strike that whole sentence about uses shall be limited to single-family residential uses?
We would probably want to expand.
Just expand, yes.
Yeah, because we do wish to exclude, whatever you call it, manufactured home.
Yeah.
Rural workplaces, we don't want that.
So, you're saying uses shall be limited to single-family residential uses and customary accessory units?
Would you include them, like tools?
Yes. Let's go with, yeah, let's go with single-family detached customary accessory buildings and single-family detached. Single-family detached and customary accessory structures.
Okay.
And that should coordinate well with...
So, I'm going to get the word exactly right, just make sure it's, I'll be right. Uses shall be limited to single-family detached residential uses, is that what you want?
Correct.
And then, and customary accessory buildings.
Correct. Accessory structures.
And that's, and a pool is a structure.
Yeah.
That, that, add a note, protect the town neighborhood residents. If those are the conditions you want to apply, and they...
Or with, we...
Yeah.
At least some people want that. And if we do that, that's, that's not a problem if we do the town, of course, you can apply those conditions and recommend those to the county.
Okay, cool. I got this word in. Uses shall be limited to single-family, there's another word there.
Detached.
Detached, thank you.
Residential.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll give you my copy so you can get the notes later.
And customary accessory structures.
Jeff, I'll get you, I'll get you this stuff, I'll write it down for you.
Okay.
So, you have, so you have a motion later. I have a question about the hearing. What was the feedback on the hearing? Or the public meeting?
Public meeting.
Yeah, was there, was it positive, negative? What was, we spoke against water for what?
The informational meeting?
Yeah.
There were a lot of, I'm not sure they were against as much or even for, a lot of questions about what the attempts were, about what the attempt was.
People received it fairly well?
I think some were detached, some were okay with it. Yeah, I didn't get a strong feeling one way or the other.
Yeah, you have to recognize some people don't want anything.
No, of course, but things are going to change. Let me do about, to me, this is actually decent use of stuff.
Matt, can, Matt, can you expand on it?
I wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
Oh, you weren't there, it was Michael, sorry.
But I did talk to Michael about it, and, no, there was not a, and, Bill, there was, from what I've heard, there was not a lot of negativity to it.
It wasn't the spirit, you weren't there to me, it wasn't the spirit of me.
And, so we try not to go, that's why we...
And I'll say this, and I'll say this on record, as far as me being in the office with voicemails and emails, I've not got anyone in opposition to this case. I've had maybe two people, one, one neighbor call me before that meeting, just to see what it was about, and I think she went there. And then I had a neighbor call me today, because I was in office today, just kind of what we're talking about, and she was not in opposition. So, I've not had, I don't know about you, Jeff, but I've not had anyone call me or email me in opposition.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, I can. Yep. I have no more questions.
Any more?
I said, I have no more.
I have one more. So, on page sixteen of twenty-one, the offer and purchase in contract, they have the wrong address, they got sixty-four eighteen Scale, still at sixty-four eighteen Lake Brand. And there is a mobile homeowner, there is a manufactured house already on the property, right? And are they going to just, are they going to take it down, or? Okay, so I'm just changing the address here to Lake Brand Road.
And I checked that with the supervisor, and he said, we looked at it, I looked at it and asked the question myself, and looked it up on GIS, and what is important is, in the contract, it lists parcel number.
Got that.
Parcel number is correct.
Correct, okay.
That's their contract to buy and sell. I have nothing to do with us anyway, you should see that. All right. There being no further questions, I'm going to open the hearing at six fifty-four, and I have one individual who signed up to speak, and the others, since we don't have a big case, can we speak? John Watson?
Yes, you'll make one there.
Absolutely, say your name and the address, please.
All right.
We're friendly group.
Oh, I'm in here, I'm in, taking account of this. So, I'm John Watson, this is my wife Laurie, and we are the East Neighbors of this development. We don't have a problem with it at all, other than I'm always concerned about, like right across the street, they're putting in forty-some odd houses, and that's forty wells and forty septic tanks. And so, eight's not bad at all. I mean, I believe anybody buys property, if they don't want me to be opposed to it, I should buy it from them and do what I want to do with it. So, they can do it every day long, but we want to make sure that somebody has made sure that, you know, the water systems there aren't going to be just totally disrupted by all this development across the street, and then this. Because we have two wells on our property, we have forty-some odd acres. And the first well is five hundred twenty-five feet deep, because we couldn't get water. And then the next one was a hundred and some feet, because I said, yeah, I'll put it over there, and that's where it should be. Across the street, it's less than a hundred feet. And so, I don't know how big the act for is, I'm sure it's forever, but, you know, obviously if you're reading about all the development in Texas, they've never had a problem with water, and now they're having to do something, because there's no water. And I don't want to have a problem with water, and that's my only concern about this. You know, I won't even see, I have trees up against it, I won't see.
You're the horse lady?
Yes, I have horses, I have a horse farm. We have a horse farm.
The lots we're building, are they in Guilford County or San Diego?
Oh, yeah.
That's you.
Where?
No, 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 I mean the lots that you're talking about.
Before you, the forty houses you're talking about.
We're part, oh, you're the ones across the street?
Yeah.
That's Guilford County.
Okay, we don't control.
That was in Spitzer, why not? We're the only ones around, I work, we're in Marqueson Field. Yeah. Well, that's smart or bad, I don't know, we were here thirty-four years ago, so.
Do you have any idea how large a parcel, a tract of land is with the forty houses total?
Twenty-two acres or something like that?
No, honey, it's forty, forty-some acres.
Oh.
Just like us.
I mean, that, our farm, we were the Spencers, and we bought it from one brother, and then...
This was all Spencer land?
Yeah, and then that parcel is part of another one, and beside us is another.
So, about one acre lots for a house.
I have no idea. It's across the street, so I worry about it, so it's like dropping on the road.
Guilford County's minimum is forty-five square foot. They're probably about that.
Which is our minimum, now.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to hear what's going on, because, you know, we've got all this stuff up in silence, and I'm like...
It's a legitimate concern, really, it has density purposes.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure how you're going to get a road in there and get all these houses in there, but that's...
That's, that's the whole, the process, that's not, I'm not hearing right now.
No, I'm...
I don't even understand, but, you know, that's, that'll be, he may want to get eight, it might not be eight. It depends on, you know, this, you know, the town also contracts with Guilford County Home as far as well and septic, so same process. It's unincorporated county, and town's on Field, still have to go the same process, so.
Now, that lot size is on the table?
Across the street, no.
Oh, okay, you're with us.
Yeah, all we're doing right now is...
So, as far as water issues, it's a critical issue, but it's my understanding that in North Carolina, there's no law that gives you right to water. No one owns a water property, this who gets it first? Is that right?
I'll refer to Jeff. I don't, I...
There's nothing that specifies who has priority.
Okay, is that a government gets it first?
I'm not going to say that.
Good turn, he takes the last of the water. I wait for David to get his water in, so we can...
You want, it's a long ways away from you.
It's all right.
Hopefully, never happens, but it's not gonna happen. Okay, so, I didn't run the clock on you, because I knew you were already one, and we'd like to hear people talk, so. Any males? Anybody else have any questions? Anybody else want to speak? Anyone else want to speak? Okay, with that, I'm going to press the hearing at six fifty-nine, and ask for comments and liberation and motion from the board. Matt, because it's actually a good use of a property, so I think it'd be a lot worse. Yeah, I mean, I know people won't like to say this, but the final analysis, most of some people have done it to develop at some point in time. It's just a matter of which problem, it's just how, how's it developed. And in this particular case, we're looking at lots that are atypical from what we're seeing in most subdivisions. And if you want to try and maintain rural character, what better way to maintain rural character than to have larger lots? Now, there's a plus and minus to that, people say it's exclusionary, that's not for us to decide.
Nice question.
Sure, yeah.
So, um...
Just say your name.
Laurie Watson, the horse lady.
I think you use that term...
I think you used that term in the public meeting.
No, I didn't use it.
Somebody else did.
He did. He did. So, just, yeah, just curious, does the board ever go look at a piece of land before they approach it?
We do, we always, we actually, since we always do.
Okay. Then you've looked at it and you've seen all the houses on Lake Brand and it's just gonna be interesting how you're gonna do drives off of, right now, the property has the one driveway off of Scalesville. There's no drive off of the way for it right now.
My understanding is that the property road, that was the initial, am I correct on that?
Sure, the configuration, I think it both pieces of road.
I mean, as far as.
Special reference.
And, and is UDT is gonna be all?
Yeah, they have to get a driveway for minutes. And I'm sure that if it was on one highway fifty, you wouldn't get five or eight minutes. Something, maybe Lake Brand, you wouldn't get either.
Less the traffic.
Yeah, the cable's not one fifty, I made terms from one fifty.
No, I'm not talking about, we have a property on one fifty in our, our main, wherever they were proposing to be all aside. Now, I'm not that big in the, in the original request.
Do we have any more discussions on that motion?
Any more, sir? Any more discussion?
All right, I'm in motion. All right, I move that case RZ zero-six two-zero-two-four. You recommend to the council for approval as opposed by the applicant, with the modifications to the conditional uses that we all agree to. The request is consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive plan, because it retains rural character and small-town atmosphere. And is reasonable and in the public interest, because it will be in harmony with the area in which it's located and with general plans for the land use and development of the town of Summerfield and within the general plans and for the land use and development of the town of Summerfield, and it's in form.
Thank you.
Would you take the pardon amendment that does not hurt the neighboring property owners?
Well, we want to put that one, which.
Sorry?
I put it in my spot, it's part of the, you know.
First, do we not, do we not have to state that, will we state the main terms?
We'll, I'm gonna give it to him tonight, so go ahead. Okay, so let me change the what Dick just said, so we're gonna change the, there's reasonable and in the public interest because to, does not substantially hurt adjoining and abutting property and will be in harmony with the areas in which it's located and in the general plan, plans for land use and development of the town of Summerfield. Okay, any special questions?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There are no further discussions. Call me all, Kathy?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
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 Sis five zero. Thank you all.
Sorry about the delay, dude.
No problem, we got work.
Jeff, I'll be, I'll be my notes with the motion, so you can.
We'll sit in the court. Okay.
All right, so if anyone wants to leave their vote, don't, you want to put the two of those parts? Don't do the agenda.
Thanks, sir. Okay, so we're gonna move now the election chair and vice chair, and I'll open nomination for chair.
I nominate you for chair.
Oh, I second that. You said Dick, right?
Yes.
We didn't say Dick, okay.
I said, I said, I said you, which was.
Right. Well, I appreciate, two people. Not many of them. Is there any other nominations? Let's just do, hands up, all in favor? Sis five zero. For vice chair, I would like to nominate Kathy, primarily because Kathy has been on the underwork for a long time and I think she deserves a tribute to her.
I just have a couple of questions, sir, Kathy, I like you from person, you know that. Please, I hope you think, I hope you know that. But are you, anywhere related to Possibility Pond?
I own Possibility Pond, me and my class.
Second, on the county deannexation property.
Yes.
Two pieces were deannexed for Possibility Pond, is that true?
No, no, that is incorrect. Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me answer this question. They were not, what they own that map that was in Guilford County, the planning development, their agenda, I found, it took me three days to line that map. They have two pieces of property Possibility Pond listed as owned by David Couch, but not deannexed.
Okay, well, they were supposed to be, they were only for what they said, but if it's not deannexed, I don't care.
They were not deannexed, they are not owned by David Couch. Possibility Pond is owned by me and Tom Housman.
I'm done, I don't need any more.
Thank you.
I'm fine, it's all I'm asked, clarified, just those questions, if they weren't deannexed, I'm fine. That's all I want to find out.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, raise your hand. I pass six five zero Kathy's vice chair. I don't know whether you're gonna pick anything, I have this debating years.
I was just, I was just hoping that you.
That's what happened to me at all.
That's my best word to you, by my heart.
I was just hoping that your health continues in its excellent state as it is in that.
You're only new.
You have any other business?
Okay, is there any other business?
I move adjourned.
Okay, I want, before that, I want to welcome Ron to a full notification board and thank Jeff and Matt for getting this together.
Oh, our new staff, our temporary staff, welcome. Temporary intern, whatever, thank you guys.
We're doing, we're doing.
Thank you guys. We guys stepped into a mess, we appreciate it. We thank our new turnip too, yeah, thank you, sir.
Wait, so before we adjourn, let me also say that I was down at the Guilford County Planning and Development Board this week, Tuesday, when they opened and spoke to Oliver Bass, one of their senior staff people, and he acknowledged that that was an error and he corrected in the minutes of the next, when they approved the minutes for the next.
We're, we're good, that's all I really know.
Just wanted to make sure.
But you can see why.
I like doing the old job.
I appreciate, you can understand why I'm concerned about it, though, wouldn't you?
Now you know why I'm separating.
Yeah, we're good.
Notion to adjourn, was it seconded?
Nobody yet.
Well, okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Adjourned.